All right, welcome this evening. We're going to go ahead and get started. First of all, is there a motion to accept or modify the agenda?
Um, I don't know if this would be the proper time of month for this, but I was hoping we could split the consent agenda in half and have the meeting minutes in one consent agenda and then the rest of it all in the other.
Like it is an A and a B.
An A and a B, yeah. Or I could make that move so that I went to the consent agenda if you'd prefer. I think my guess is up for stuff.
Yeah. Is there a second on that?
I second it.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed, no?
Thank you.
All right, so next we're going to have first, a motion to approve Consent Agenda A, which is the approval of the meeting minutes. Is there a motion? I haven't been called out.
I make a motion to approve the minutes, meeting minutes as written.
Is there a second on that? A second? Any discussion on the minutes?
Uh, I had one discussion point, which first, thank you for doing the minutes. Very much appreciated. One of the concerns that I did have, just a slight edit if possible, was in the first set of minutes from February 7th, um, the school board reports that talks about how Ms. Allen shared that she was exasperated, exasperation with having to hear about the child abuses happening in our school system. So like exasperation was not over having to hear from the parents, but over the fact that the child abuse was continuing to happen. I just wanted to make sure that that, I know it's a very small difference in detail, but if we could possibly edit that, please. Thank you.
That was mine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
How I wanted that one.
Any further discussion on the meeting minutes? Oh, actually, I've got a question. The one on the SBMA approval, that was the June one, though, like?
Yeah.
That was the June one, so it's not on.
That one's on.
Yeah, we're still working on it. Right, right, okay. Yeah, I was just, as I was saying, I knew it was not the right month. Okay. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay, and then we're going to move on to the Consent Agenda Section B, which is everything else. Is there a motion on that?
I move to approve Consent Agenda Section B, which would be items G through P, as in here, as presented.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Great, thank you. Next up this evening, we're going to move into the Action Agenda. The first item is going to be the second reading of Policy BDD Electronic Participation in Meeting from Remote Locations. First, is there anyone from the community that would like to speak on this item? Okay, Dr. Costa.
Well, good afternoon. Madam Chair, for all members, in front of you, you have the Policy BDD Electronic Participation Meeting for Remote Locations. This is the second reading of that. There were no suggestions for the first reading. Is there any other suggestions that would like to be made during the second reading?
Well, it seems like you've made a bunch of changes or sold me a bunch of cheese based on the fact that the policy guidelines were indicated by the Virginia Department of Education from the last time we talked. Is that kind of correct?
From for BDD? No.
This is the?
Oh, was this the cell phone one?
No.
This is the electronic participation meeting.
Right.
I did not read Remote Locations.
Okay, sorry, my bad.
Dr. Costa, I just had in that first bullet there, it says for purposes of, it should be determining whether a forum is physically assembled. It's just a spelling. It's some D E T and I N G. It's not.
Detony.
Definitely, yeah, determining.
And why is it a tennis? I never thought, I don't know, I was sounding like that bank.
And then the others, testing recommendations for Policy BDD Electronic Participation Meeting for Remote Locations.
I'm not having necessarily class stuff.
Yeah, and we'll have our third reading at our September meeting on that. Right up there. Next up, we have the second reading and discussion, Policy Regulation GCBD-R update. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item? Dr. Costa.
Thank you. In front of you, you do see Policy Regulation GCBD-R, the updates, and just to go over the updates, the recommendations that came from the first reading, if you'll notice on page two, and page two is the same for professional staff and support staff. It reads, it says after five consecutive days of absences, or a noted trend pattern, or evidence of misuse of sick leave personnel may be required to furnish the principal with validation for reasons of absences. Also added was failure to comply may result in further actions as stated in Policy GAA Attendance Expectations.
I like citing phrase that.
Yeah, that was good. That's what we suggested, and I think that's a good middle ground of what we were talking.
And I don't think I received any additional comments after this one came out this week.
Um, so the only feedback I've gotten was more questions, um, as far as clarity for certain staff are, should, should staff be expecting to use all 10 sick days? Or should it be known that it's frowned upon and that the sick days really are only meant for sickness and you should try not to use them and roll some over? Because I have spoken to some, like, well, those are my days, I'm going to use them. And my thought was, are you intending to get sick? Like, are, so what is the intention specifically? So we can have this clarified for staff.
So that's a great question. And really, I mean, they are staff days. You know, the school board rates them those days for specific reasons. They do have their personal emergency days that they can use for anything. And that sick is strictly for if you're sick, a child's sick, a grand, you know, a mother, you know, some failing member, maybe you're having to help take care of. Those are what sick days are used for. Now, do we expect, that's up to the staff member. I'm not going to tell somebody, no, you can't use a day if it's a legitimate use. But, you know, as we have talked in central office before, where people have taken their sick days and went on cruises, that's a no-no. That's not what a sick day is for. That will not be approved. If you want to use your personal for that, your emergency, you can, but not your sick. So it needs to be used for that reason. And this isn't just a, you know, a gotcha. And really, the intent of this was because, as I stated last, or a couple of weeks ago, principals felt that they didn't have the authority to ask for a doctor's note because of the way policy was written, it's in five consecutive days. And so this allows principals to then be able to come in and now ask, hey, I've noticed that you've missed every second Friday for the last two months. What's going on? I'm going to need something in the future if you're going to miss the next Friday. So we can have those conversations and see what's going on. It just allows them to do that. And the thing I will say is that administration and staff, they work well together. They talk together all the time. I know we have Dr. Johnston back there, he's a school administrator. And I can tell you that the relationships that are built with our school leaders and staff, they know what's going on. They communicate all the time on a daily basis. This is not for 90% of our staff members. This may only be for those 10% that is chronic or something that we do have some issues with. This also allows them, when somebody does use all of their sick days, and now they're taking leave, hey, for them to, you know, for us to have a conversation. So it just gives us a little more, the ability to talk with staff and just to dig into it a little deeper than. But I don't want to tell a staff member, no, you can't use a day if it's a legitimate use, so.
Any additional questions on this? Thank you on that, Dr. Costa. Next up, we have approval of Shenandoah Valley Computer Science Regional Partnership Grant. Is there anyone besides Mr. Stotnofsky to speak on this this evening?
Good evening. So like you're saying, Warren County Public Schools is part of the Shenandoah Valley Computer Science Regional Partnership. It's a collaboration between George Mason University and several rural districts. And the focus of that partnership is really on computer science or data science integration in schools. So last year, Warren County Public Schools applied for several mini grants and was awarded $9,500 to purchase computer science equipment for professional development for integration in computer science. So at this time, I'm just seeking approval to accept those funds.
Are there any questions for Mr. Stotnofsky? Is there a motion?
I move that approval be given to exception of the Valley Computer Science Regional Partnership Grants in the amount of $9,500 in category 68000 Technology.
Is there a second? Second, any discussion on that?
Madam Chair, I would just like to make note, the recent, we're not, is the board clear on why we are not asking the Board of Supervisors for an increase in appropriation? We did include that, we're always been keeping a running total because they started out with about $127,000 above, and then we used some of it at a different tariff we have, and then we're using this $9,500. So that'll be the, so we're not, we don't have to go with them. Now, the next items you will see it does request, because it's now, but that still leaves us, you can see that little cushion, you know, subtract that $9,500 from that $8,500. So any other small ones that maybe would fit within that, we won't have to ask for any recent appropriations, we'll just be able to, for the board to approve and accept. So I just wanted to clarify and make sure you guys all are.
Thank you. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you. Next item is approval for FY '24 School Safety and Security Grant Funds. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this this evening? Mr. Stotnofsky?
For this one here, this is part of the fiscal year School Safety and Security Grant Funds. Warren County Public Schools was awarded $131,849.32 in federal and state grant funds as part of those grants. This is a one-time grant fund that we can use to purchase a variety of school security and safety equipment, or to install those things in schools, provide professional development and sell them. So these are, there's a federal amount and a state amount I put in, in the document here for you all to see, but I'm just asking that approval be given to accept these school grant funds and that the superintendent be authorized to request an appropriation of that amount to technology.
Are there any questions for Mr. Stotnofsky on this?
Uh, I had asked my questions prior, and then just to clarify, the items that we will not be purchasing right now, we can, the grant money will still be available for us to do so in the next budget. Because I've already.
The next item on the agenda.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm jumping in.
But this does sign to that, because we're going to try to use a portion of the funds from this to help fund some.
As our matches, as our match. So we have the match. What is our match?
Our match is typically 30% on for eligible items.
So we can use these funds as matching, so we don't have to come up with it some other way. So they will count towards that match.
Okay. Is there a motion on this?
I move that the approval be given to accept that this school year 2024 School Safety and Security Grants, and that the superintendent be authorized to request that the Warren County Board of Supervisors appropriate $131,849.32 to category 68,000 Technology.
Is there a second? A second? Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you. And last item, approval of E-rate funds and purchases. Anyone else here to speak on that? Mr. Stotnofsky?
So I remember talking about E-rate last year. E-rate's just a federal program for schools and public libraries. It provides discounts on internet services and all of the connectivity infrastructure that provides the internet to our school system. We are eligible for a 30% discount, which means that we have to have a 30% match for whatever funds we are allocated. In this case here, I tried to give a table to break down what was happening with all of the different categories and funding sources, because this one was a little bit more complicated than the ones in the past, where I feel like it was, here's what we're doing, here's our 30% match, please provide the approval and allocation. So in this case here, I'm really just hoping that we can have approval for us to accept the $163,582.19 in discount funds from the E-rate program, and that we could use from all of those different items in there, $52,775.89 would be our local match funds, and those would be to provide the internet services, Rocky access points, which I don't know if we have Rocky access points in this room here, but licenses for those particular access points in our schools. Another component is for our firewall protection services and subscription. And then we will use $22,476.92 from the previously approved Safety and Security Funds that you all talked about there. Do you have any questions on what happened in that document?
Is there a motion?
I move that approval be given for Warren County Public Schools to accept the Schools and Libraries Program funding in the amount of $163,000, $163,582.19, that $52,775.89 in local funds be used towards the purchase broadband services, Rocky access points and licenses, and Palo Alto support and subscriptions, and that $22,476.92 from the fiscal year 2024 School Safety and Security Grant be used to purchase UPS equipment and installation.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? And to Mr. Stotnofsky?
Next up this evening, we have reports. And first up is going to be our SRO Annual School Report.
So I provided the document for you guys to kind of look at ahead of time. So we're required by law every year to compile a list of our annual report for the SRO's arrest data. So I've broken it down into separate categories. As you can see, I broke it down by what's required by law, race, ethnicity, gender, whether it was student or non-student, and whether it resulted in a criminal investigation or non-criminal investigation. And then below that, I broke it down also by the type of, what the outcome of the investigation was. So I did do a definition column over on the side, so that everybody has a better understanding when I say a summons or petition, a diversion. So the way the juvenile justice system works, it's a lot different than the way the adults work. So we have a lot more leniency when it comes to juveniles. We can handle matters informally, which is kind of just like a counseling, and if we feel the parents and the schools are kind of handling things on their own, we can kind of note that, and if something else happens, we could take it to the next step. They can also be resolved through juvenile intake, either between a diversion, which is sometimes you'll see like community service, or things of that nature through a diversion program. And then our petition and summons are that they're formally charged with the offense. So I kind of broke that down also by the school year, as well as by every, every offense code in order that we seem to know of stuff. So no surprise to anybody, we had 96 incidences where we charged possession of a vape, and you can see the breakdown there. So out of the 96, you know, 24 were handled, 25% of it was handled informally. And then it's broken down by petitions, diversions, and summonses. And it goes down for each of the offenses through there. So it's a lot of data to look at, and overall, I can tell you what, it looks like there's a lot. We had 440 incidences in the school year. That's still relatively really low compared to our neighboring jurisdictions. I think Frederick County had had over 4,000 incidents. So we're still on the, it looks like a big number when you're looking at the totality of everything, but it's really not when you actually break it down and look at what the actual outcomes were. So, and moving forward, I'm hoping that in the next couple of months, when I do the report, it's going to be based like this, so that you guys have a better breakdown and understanding of what's actually happening. So any questions on any of that?
Um, I know we have discussed the change in law in Virginia, so going forward, should we not be expecting to see the possession of the vape?
Correct. Or is that actually be gone? I'm not sure how the administration and everybody's handling it, if they're, you guys are going to be keeping track of how many vapes. Any information from those is great, because if we do see an increase of possession of vapes, for instance, even though we can't charge them, if we have numbers that say, since this law went into effect, we're seeing an increase, we could hopefully use those numbers to go back to legislation and say, hey, you thought you were going to help kids out, but in reality, they're getting easier access to it, they're not afraid to carry those types of things. So moving forward, you should only see if it is a THC vape on school property for us, so.
And we do have to report that. That'll be reported to our code by the Department of Air. And so that will be in the month of May forward, if there's any possession that, that we had to make disciplinary action towards a student on with a backdoor vape, that would be in that support.
I just want to say, I really like the format you chose here. I think it's really nicely worked down. I think the definitions are really helpful. So I love seeing that. I think it's really easy to read. I think the public will appreciate it.
And one thing I will add is, if you look at the assaults, assault and battery, so with that, last year, legislation changed for assault and batteries. So typically, what we would do is if it was considered a mutual combat site, we wouldn't even do anything about it. Now, moving forward, the victims have to agree to either have it diverted or handle it informally. So if there's a fight, and we typically would say, well, it seems more of a mutual combat thing. If the complaining party's parents want to move forward, we then have to send the report over to juvenile intake, and that victim's parents have to agree to either handle it informally or a diversion on that case. If not, the charges have to be filed. So that was a change last year for the Department of Juvenile Justice moving forward. So that's kind of why you, I'm not sure what the numbers were the year before, but that's why you see, you know, the 19 petitions on assault and battery is because the victim's parents have to agree to divert it or handle it informally, so.
I think that might be something else that might be interesting for us to see if you're able to, like, on a, just like, once or twice a year to break down any trends, or I really like that you mentioned neighboring jurisdictions. I think that's helpful context for us to see, like, where we are comparatively.
Yep.
So maybe like, once or twice a year, getting that too would be great.
And that's my goal, is moving forward. I've been working really closely with Frederick County and having our reporting somewhat similar, so that we can better compare, like, what we're seeing in the areas, even though they're larger than us, like, they're still our next door neighbors, and kind of, we see the same trends as them. So I'm hoping that we can start comparing, comparing that data with them, so.
Any additional questions, comments on this? Thank you so much. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our July 2024 Financial Report. I think these are the.
There should be a printed copy in front of you. And I think when we initially talked about this, it was going to be done quarterly, but I wanted to put something in front of you tonight, and we can continue to do it monthly if that's what you would like, that would be helpful. But the main thing is, I know you haven't had a chance really to look over it. It just came off of the printer on my way over. So what I would do is ask mainly that if you look at it over time, and either would like to see it in a different format, or if there's certain information missing that would be helpful for you in understanding where we're at in the budget process each or in the budget each month or whatever. But the very first page is just a snapshot of our revenue and our expenditures. This is for all funds, including the operating fund, which is by, by the largest. And so we've broken it out by our different revenue sources, and then the expenditures are by the categories, which the Board of Supervisors has appropriated our money to us. And then the column shows how much we've received in July, and then the percent of what the total expected is for that revenue source for the expenditure, and then how that compares to how we are through the fiscal year. Now, I'll say this, there are a couple of things. This is on a cash basis. The sales tax that we actually received in July, it's shown here right now. It will be accrued back to last year, because it was actually what was collected in May, and then what we received in August is what was received in June. So those numbers will come out. So these numbers will change, but on a cash basis, this is what we're looking at. And even some of the expenditures, some of those expenditures that are reported here in our year-to-date expenditures, which is just the month of July, are actually ones that were incurred in fiscal '24 and will get accrued back. So technically, or technically, but the year-to-date expenditures for July will actually be a little bit less in the final analysis, when we look at it on an accrual basis, because, again, some of them are attributed to the prior fiscal year. And then what we did, what I do is, the next page sort of breaks, it breaks out by the various revenue sources, of course, the local, the miscellaneous, the federal, and more detail there for you to see where all the different revenue comes from and what came in in July. And then the next section of it would be the expenditures, and at the top of that, it gives the categories, which we showed on the first page, but then it breaks it down into what we call functions. The state divides the categories up into a more specific areas, which fall into those categories, and you can see where we've spent there. The thing is, in July, our 10-month employees, they receive a paycheck, but it's actually one that was run back in June, because they're paid on a, over 12 months, but their cycle starts August 31st and runs through July 31st, but the July pay for them is incurred for, it's a final payment installment on their prior year contract. So that's not shown in July. So when you look at it in July, our expenditures aren't near what they will be come August and from then on through the rest of the year, because the majority of our employees are 10-month employees. and, and, and from then on through the rest of the year because the majority of our employees are 10-month employees. And then the final sheets, uh, are more of a, uh, it's an internal document that we use with all what we call our cost center managers. And what is done is it listed by the account manager, a description of whatever that cost center is. And then breaking out the detail of the expenditures, um, for that month. Any encumbrances that have been made, purchase orders that have been issued but not yet received and invoiced. And, uh, how much we've spent in July and then year-to-date, which of course is the same for this first one. And then what that leaves available, um, for that particular line in the budget. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have and, uh, would also be interested in hearing from you if there's other ways of presenting it or whatever that makes it more, uh, more useful for you.
I have a question about substitutes. Hopefully we end up by July, obviously we didn't use any. But the, where would that fall? We want to track to see how much we're spending on substitutes.
That we have broken out into each school and cost center. Let's just pick somebody as an example here. Let's come to the first school. And that happens to the Skyline Middle School on page four. If you go to page five and then go to page six. At the very, uh, end of, it's 290 is the cost center, Skyline Middle School. Before you go to LFK, there's a line there that says 907-290-161-13124. That's other professional services. That is for their substitutes. We've broken it out and given each school a budget to use. And what, what I will do, and I didn't give here, there's a, a trend sheet showing our actual expense and then how we trend that for the year. And I do it for a number of things that I see as sort of variable things in the budget. We can't always, um, predict accurately. That would be our utilities. We break them out and trend them. Our substitute use, our fuel and all. So I will consolidate those on another report that I'll get for you on a monthly basis to show where we're at and if we continue trending as we are. This is where we expect we'll be, uh, on a month-to-month basis with, with those main, those three main areas. Again, substitutes, utilities, and then fuel for our vehicles.
I also had the moving forward, starting with the September work session that we'll be having in ESS self-report. So that'll, I mean, that will go kind of hand in hand with this, but that will be a time to like, to highlight those numbers from each school and keep us up to date on that too.
And, and just remember on those school budget, I think I budgeted, uh, and I filmed it 95%. I can't remember the.
I forget the percentage.
Yeah, I gave them a, a percentage of what they, they spent last year, what we've had in that pers- in that number. So I think it might've been about 90 or 95%. Just so that we kind of add it to better.
I'm not really sure if I can tell you tonight exactly.
No, I guess I say over time you see.
Yeah.
Either between now, the next time we present it or even after that. You know, we could adjust it to, to put it in a format and the, the data that helps, helps you.
I appreciate this starting point.
Yeah, that's what this is.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
You know, just as we go forward, obviously I think for us to be to know whether we're on track is the big, is the biggest thing. Obviously you know, you would know better whether we're on track. Just because you had a big expense this month, we may see, oh my gosh, it's a 82% of it spent. But well, we don't, we don't plan on spending much, much else, you know? So we, we don't know that. You know that. The key is to be able to sound an alarm if something's overspending. It's the biggest thing. We don't want to be over budget. We want to the house to make extra money keys of the whole.
So our, our debt service, uh, if you look back category is 100% 100%, you know, quite a couple of dollars over it. But, um, that's a one-time-a-year expense that we have. So July 15th, when we send out our checks, um, we're 100% expended on it. That's probably the only category that we go that fast to, to full expenditure. Maybe it would be helpful if we listed, um, not only our expenses this year where we're at, but where we were last year as a comparison.
That, I think that'd be great.
That sort of lets you know, gosh, last year we were only 15% at this point. And this year we're 20%. We, we need to look and see why we're trending and get up running and get out of it or whatever.
I think that'd be great.
That'd be awesome. How are we doing on the legal? That, that was one of the other ones I've run over last year. Do you know where that, where I find that in here?
Yes, if you.
Go ahead.
On the very first page of the detailed report, if you come down under, um, the Office of the Superintendent, after you come past salaries, the very next line is legal services. You can see we have 55,000 budgeted. We didn't pay any bills in July. That's not saying we didn't have any bills. Um, it's just they didn't get paid in July. And quite honestly, if we had some in July that got paid, they'd probably get accrued back to last year because they probably were for services up through June 30th. There's, there's a lag and they bill those. But that, that is the predictable line where we pay our legal services out of.
Any other questions, call, tell names, let's see.
It's the debt services. Um, so that would be, where, where are we still paying? We're paying on, we're paying on both high schools still?
No, that one is Jesse Jeffries.
It's mainly Ressie Jeffries. It's this energy survey, uh, energy saving contracting that we did quite a few years ago where a company came in guaranteed that they would save us money by replacing lights with higher efficiency, low-flow fixtures in the, uh, restrooms and things like that. They actually drilled wells for our cooling towers and our irrigation systems at our school. So we're not using down water. Now that has some drawbacks, I think we found, but, uh, that was done and those savings in, in theory, we're supposed to pay for this bond, which paid for that work to save the energy, but went beyond that. And it helped with, with the Ressie Jeffries renovation that we did. It didn't pay all of it, but it paid a good portion of it. And, um, that's what that is.
And that is the only bond that the school pays. The rest are covered by the county.
So ones like for the two high schools, which are still paying more, those, the county pays those.
Okay.
And all others.
So do we know how much longer we have to pay on that bond? Are we?
I'll check and see. It's, it's.
We just have to look at the amortization schedule to see what, what is, how it's laid out.
All right. Any other questions? We can look at financial afterward. Next up, we have Ms. Bragg to talk about the 2425 assessment data report.
So before Ms. Bragg gets up here to speak, the next two items we're going to discuss, the VDOE kind of just threw us for a loop on a couple of things. You know, they sent out, uh, like the day before we were supposed to put out the, uh, the, the notice for the agenda, they said, oh, hey, here's all the updates for the, the cell phone policy. And then, uh, Monday night I get an email that says there's an, there's a meeting at nine o'clock with Dr. Coons. And so we log on and they inform us, we're releasing the data today at noon. Typically the VDOE releases that data in September. So we had planned at the September work session to go over our accreditation. But because that information came out yesterday, we felt we needed to at least kind of recognize that, kind of talk about it a little bit. It's not going to be in full detail as it will be in September. But we do want to recognize that the data was released, uh, yesterday. Parents can look at it. So I appreciate Ms. Bragg and her team working on that to kind of be able to talk about it today.
Thanks, Dr. Ballinger. And, um, as Dr. Ballinger indicated, we are continuing to, to pour over the data that was released because, um, the data that was updated yesterday on the school quality profile website that they let us know would be updated at noon is raw data. So it does not include growth, recovery. Those numbers are strictly pass fails, um, on our standards of learning assessments in the for content areas. And then just as a reminder, that English, math, and science are what factors into accreditation. History has numbers there, but they don't factor into accreditation. And if you're looking at the website that I linked, um, to that school quality profile, if you're looking at that website, you have to specifically select the assessment tab to see the new data. The accreditation ratings that are still there for the schools that are still listed with all the red, yellow, green colors, that is last year's accreditation. So the only new data that you'll see is off that website. Whether you, whether you look at it as a division or look at an individual school is under the assessment tab. And you'll see the addition of the 2023, 2024 SOL raw reporting data. So that raw reporting data, overall, if you just look at the county as a whole, you will see that in English, in our all student group, there was a slight tick down from a 70% pass to a 69%. In math, um, there was a decrease of four percentage points from 69% to 65%. And science held steady at a 59% pass. So the overall for the division is trending in much the way that we've talked about previously. We're either kind of holding steady or sort of ticking in a little bit of a downtrend on our raw data. When we add in, um, growth and some of those other recovery methods, we'll see those numbers go up when they determine if we're a level one, a level two, a level three, when we talk about like that stop like for accreditation. So that is the data that they released yesterday. As Dr. Ballinger said yesterday morning, we were notified that there was going to be a press conference and that the governor, the secretary, uh, of education and the superintendent for public instruction will be talking to, uh, the mass media about kind of trends in SOL data. And they also talked a little bit about chronic absenteeism. Um, and some of the initiatives that the state has led over the last year with all-in tutoring money that's being spent, the implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act, which we've talked about before. And so it was a kind of a broad overview of where they're seeing some trends statewide in chronic absenteeism and in the SOL, uh, raw data. As far as chronic absenteeism goes, that is an area of, um, success that we're succeeding and projecting going forward with accreditation here in the county. We're on track to show that our elementary and middle schools have, uh, reduced their chronic absenteeism rate. And will probably trend towards a level one with chronic absenteeism. And that comes from some of the initiatives that the state approved as far as allowing students to come in and make up some mistime. And Warren County participated in that project during the latter months of last school year. And we'll continue that process, uh, beginning in, in the fall. So probably after Labor Day, early October, someone in there will return to that after-school makeup or before school in some cases, uh, for tutoring to allow students to make up missed days and kind of help continue to address chronic absenteeism as one way to address chronic absenteeism. Overall, things that we continue to do to try to help improve, you know, our instructional, our instruction to our students and our test scores. We are looking at this year, again, that implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act at the elementary schools, which is going to focus on high-quality instructional materials. Those are state-approved materials that we're using to address signs of reading and, and building better foundational readers. K through two will have the new vowels assessment available to them. Want to say, set back, K three. K three will have the vowel assessment available to them. So we'll be seeing that data for the first time here with they test, uh, over the next several, several weeks going into September. We're also looking at piloting some universal screeners, uh, in math in K eight and continuing to use some of those state-provided resources like Lexia and Zern that the state provided through all-in tutoring. Uh, we continue to focus heavily on student-centered PD. And that's PD with teachers in the classroom real tight alongside instructional coaches. And also looking at our school plans, our division plans. Those were submitted and accepted by the state and holding, you know, regular monthly meetings. In some cases bi-weekly meetings, uh, with principals to ensure that those plans are being followed and that we're hoping to move instruction in a, in, in a better way. I'll continue to make the plea for a focus on instructional leadership in our buildings. That is where the rubber meets the road, so to speak. When we are focused on instruction, that is when instruction is going to improve. So our, uh, building administrators will be having their first, uh, PLC. We have contracted with, um, a professional development, um, for administrators focusing on observation, feedback, and how to coach teachers. Again, our, our hiring with the way we have to hire now with teachers that are, um, sometimes not licensed and sometimes do not have student teaching experience. I think that continues to play a factor in the instruction. Everyone is working as hard as they can. They're being supported by instructional coaches and in their buildings to have success. But teaching is a hard job to learn on the job because those students that are sitting in front of us that year, we only have that one year to try to get them one years of growth, one year of growth. So it's a hard sort of on-the-job learning process for our teachers. But many of them are taking it in stride and reaching out when they need support. Um, and we've developed through, uh, the teacher, teacher support through Hope and, and, and callings on IRT and throughout the division, a pathways program to provide them with explicit instruction themselves on what they need to meet those criteria for success in the classroom. Whether it's classroom management, instructional planning, or professionalism, those eight criteria that are on the teacher evaluation, uh, process. So we continue to, to move forward. As part of the governor's comments, he, you know, addressed that we're continuing to still pull out of COVID and the learning loss that happened during those years. Um, and so, you know, while we have a lot of work still to do, I think that we have some plans in place to get us there. Any questions?
Or we'll be hearing about this at the September work.
Absolutely. So, um, at the September work session, we should have at that point the final, I mean, I can't guarantee it, but we should have the final version from the state of where the growth, um, the level one, two, and three indicators are coming into play. And so we should be able to give you an overview of exactly what accreditation is going to look like for the 24, 25 school year. Just as a heads up, accreditation and how we accredit schools, that's changing alongside new English standards, new math standards. So, um, that process will be based on this year's data. So this year's data, or sorry, this year's accreditation will be based on the old system. So you'll see accredited, accredited with conditions. But then this year's data collection will be under the new accreditation and accountability system that's still kind of working out the kinks of the State Board of Education. So a whole new system to learn with, you know, how they're going to calculate that. But yes, there will be a full presentation of accreditation in September.
You were talking about the, that this is just the raw data for right now. Is this on these three years' worth of charts here? Are we, do they have it set up for we're comparing raw data to raw data to raw data?
Well, it's like that way. It looks like that way to me, yes.
Okay.
Yes. It looks like that it is comparing raw data.
Okay. Then, um, I know that the writing wasn't listed as part of the accreditation, but that we don't have a division score at all for any of it.
Writing, writing has changed and it's been in flux at different grade levels for across a series of years. So, um, last year was the first year that the state implemented the integrated reading and writing SOL assessment. It does not count towards English, but the. It does not count towards English, but the students in 5th and 8th grade have to take that SOL test. But, we did not get any data out of it as far as it does not factor into accreditation. They sent for the test, but it does not factor into accreditation. That's why you only see, I think it's a state, a state number in your writing scores. And that is because some divisions continue to use the SOL test. But, you also had to do the Integrated Reading and Writing Test was required. And then, at our high school, EOC writing, that SOL test was typically done at 11th grade. Several years ago, we transitioned to the writing portfolios, which also don't factor into accreditation at the high school level. So, as of last year, there was no writing factoring into accreditation at any level. We don't know if that will change. And eventually, that IRW Integrated Reading and Writing Test will become part of accreditation. We don't know where they're headed with that. But, we do anticipate having to administer that test again.
Thank you.
Heading into the work session items, the first one is going to be the Second Reading and Discussion of IIIBE-A-R3/GAB-R3, Use of Personally-Owned Electronic Devices. Dr. Costner.
I'm Chair Ford.
That'll be a side for a little bit.
Okay. What you have in front of you, again, is policy, Regulation IIIBE-A-R3/GAB-R3, Use of Personally-Owned Electronic Devices. As you are aware, at the last Board meeting, there was a discussion about how we were to add this to our policy manual, but then, due to the Executive Order Number 33, this brought the Board to review and discuss new potential changes or updates to IIIBE-A-R3 to GAB-R3. And this is based on the governor's release of updates that came on August the 15th, which was on a Thursday after our meeting was held. So, these have been added, again, to let you know that the Virginia Department of Education is to release some final guidance on the use of cell phones in schools by September the 16th, 2024. If you have in front of you the red line items where definitions were added, procedures were added based on the governor's recommendation, again, following their guidance. Is there any questions or discussions about the second reading of this?
Is our plan going to be to skip the main meeting next month and bring it back at the work session in September, since there's still some more updates expected? Or, are we going to talk about it again at the main meeting just to get public?
The current plan, if the Board wishes, I'll be glad to bring it up and put it on hold till the next, till the next work session. The plan was to move forward with this based on we're developing a cellphone-free policy, given exactly what the governor's recommendations were. We'll be glad to wait and look at it again. It's to bring it back up whenever the Board wishes to do.
It's just confusing to everybody with the government changing of things. And it's like, we think we're on one path, and we put work into it, and we put work into it, and then, the state says, there's a next step, and then, it just...
We're not trying to drag my feet or drag us through it, but if there's going to be, if we go through with it, and then, there's some other updating us, and then, we have to immediately change and update it again.
This is a draft, and currently, what you would have is what was added to policy at the last meeting, which says instructional time with our definition, which means from the start of the class period to the end of the class period at the secondary schools, which would allow still high schoolers to use their phone at lunch or something of that nature. And that is, that is how our current policy stays. You know, we wanted to get this out because we've got those updates, because it's a drastic change. When you look at how we define instructional time to how the VDOE defined instructional time and said bell-to-bell, that's a huge change for our secondary schools, I mean, specifically our high schools. So, we wanted to get this out so that you could look and say, okay, here's, here's what it could look like, because we are already getting questions from parents about, well, my child, they will be wearing a watch, that, yes, I could track them, that I could communicate with them. Well, this says no communication devices. That means even this little thing right here, that if it has its own cell number and you can dial out on it, or you can receive texts, or any kind of information on it, you're not supposed to have it on. I mean, that's, that's where this thing, and they're even saying with, you know, with the earbuds, that, you know, you cannot make Bluetooth music from your phone while you're sitting there working, because that is electronic device. We also have, you know, there's a lot of different things that parents are finding, you know, how to keep tabs on their children, and we understand that. We want parents to feel that their child is safe and also be able to, you know, know where their child is at all times. We understand that. I'm a parent, I use Life360 on my daughter, I mean, I did. So, I mean, it's just, I understand that. But, with this coming down, it's taking away some of those things. So, those are battles that I foresee parents getting upset with administrators, but we're going to have to stand and, you know, the Board will have to stand with this on saying, this is where the VDOE is taking us, this is what we have to do. There is no wiggle room that you can, yes, use this little watch and, you know, this person can, this person can't. Now, we already have things, as we talked last time, those that are on IEP or 504 plan, sorry, didn't mean to say IEP, on a 504 plan, that maybe, you know, they have to check their insulin, or maybe there's something else that is tied to their phones. Those are already written into some of those plans. So, we've already, you know, that, if students are already using it, it's already written in. So, it could be used for that. But, we just wanted to get this out and just kind of have the conversation with the Board, say, okay, here's the draft, and this is what ours would look like with the changes. Is there anything as we work through this? And really, over the next couple of, you know, I guess over the next month, you guys be looking at it, maybe having conversations with parents and staff that just say, okay, what are you, what are you seeing, what are you hearing? And then, that way, we can bring it back and say, these are the updates or the changes we kind of want to make. But, really, truly, if they keep the draft, this is it. This is cut and dry, basically, from the draft. Because if you look in there, we added their definition from that draft. Then, we also took the basic rules and procedures. Now, we did kind of summarize those a little bit, and instead of it being in three or four bullets, it's just in one little paragraph for each section. And then, we also, you know, put in there, we wanted to make sure that we listed cellphone and/or personal communication device throughout some of that. Then, also for us, well, also for parents and for students, we wanted to put in there that, as it states, that they have to use other centralized communication for non-emergency. And that means going down to the secretary to call him home and that, not pull out your phone and send a text if it's a non-emergency. So, we put that in there. And then, as far as for our coaches, a lot of teams use those apps, the apps that communicate, hey, practice is going to be moved from 5:00 to 5:30. Well, it's saying, we can't, as a school, use that. So, now, we're going to be, you know, doing other things, getting on the intercall, making an announcement about practices, the parents or cancellation of games, and if students need to come down to the office to call parents, then that's what we'll do. I mean, that's what we're there for. So, those are the things that needed to be put in there. Now, as you guys look through the draft, and you say, okay, we're good with this where we're at kind of, or maybe these are some things we maybe need to add, then I say, look at it, and then, when we bring it back when the final is done and see if anything's been changed in the final. But by that time, you've had it for a moment. You're able to, and I would say just communicate for us that we can, we can kind of take notes and then kind of summarize those notes if we need to, when we come back to a work session.
I wonder if it would be worth, because I saw that VDOE survey posted on social media in a couple of places, I wonder if that would be worth sending out from the school level just so parents have the opportunity to, I mean, because that's, yeah, I mean, that's the time for them to put their feedback in. Because after we did that attendance policy, I think that's the most feedback we've ever gotten after, we had already put it all into place and there was a lot of confusion about all of it. But, this is our chance to really get it out there, that this is what's about to happen, but here's your chance to go, let us in comments before it opens. I think that's, I mean...
Yeah, because they, and they've had public comment available online all several long, pretty much, so...
But it seems like just in the past week.
That now people are starting, right, exactly, they're back in school and they're saying, well, what's happening?
So, are you wanting us to do a survey, put our policy out there?
No, not, no, it's a survey.
It says, hey, parents, we want to let you know, this is available from the VDOE.
Okay.
There's a link available.
Push their survey.
Their survey.
We're just going to do whatever.
We're going to follow it.
And then, one of the things, oh, I'm sorry.
No, they were just saying, we'll do whatever they say, so they should comment to the state.
The state, right, yeah. The time is now, talking state. One of the things you were talking about, the watches and the tracking, one of the things that they had talked about at that meeting they had at the state superintendent, they were saying, those watches, my kids have them, you can put them on school mode, and so, I can still track my kids.
Right.
It just makes it to where it's not usable for them to play games on them or send texts or whatnot during those hours. So, one of the things that they had suggested was, when all of this does get implemented, have the ability, and I know it hasn't been successful, as people showing up in the past with the education on smart social media and whatnot, but if parents need to come in and get help learning how to set those parameters so they can still have the child, have the watch, just not have it functional in that manner, I would think that would comply with what I'm reading here.
I was wondering about that same question about the watches. If you have it in that mood and you're controlling it with your phone, it just looks like a watch at that point, like you can just tell time on it, right?
Correct, yes. Yeah. And then, I can still see on my app where they are, and then, there's an emergency function button where they can, if there's an emergency call, like 911, or have the emergency alert, go to the parent, but otherwise, it's...
And you also have to watch for those, because if it's a two-way communication, so if a parent can eavesdrop in, you got to worry about FERPA violation if they're in a classroom and conversation with other students or being had or something being done in a classroom with another student, then that parent is listening to that. So, you do have to watch those when it comes to, is there a two-way communication? Is the parent able to log in, hear what's going on? Because you don't want to get into that.
I worry about enforcing that in schools. I mean, how's the principal going to know which parent turned that on and which didn't, and who turned it off because they're on vacation, forgot to turn it back on? I mean, it just looks like a watch either way, so how do we know until you've made it school note?
Right. That's the thing, we don't. And from my understanding and reading the guidance, and Dr. Costner, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is what they say with the communication devices, cell phones, they say off. They don't say in school mode or this mode, they say off.
Correct.
I did have a question about this, number four, where it says educators and all no curriculum extracurricular sponsors must use non-social media-based apps to communicate activity and athletic scheduling. And you mentioned this, but I'm not sure that's the right phrasing, and I don't know if this came from the state. That's fine, but not social media-based apps imply there's some other app they would be using, but that doesn't make any sense, because nobody's going to have their phone, so it can't be an app at all. So, I don't know about that little theory.
So, that's a cut face, but I, you know, as we stated, I mean, when I was, you know, coaching, there were, there were multiple apps that I would use to communicate with parents. Yeah, I guess I would relate it kind of like the Class Dojo, you know, you have a lot of teachers use Class Dojo to communicate with parents. Coaches may have that simpler system set up to communicate with parents and all the students. Well, now, they're just saying, you can't use that during the school day to communicate all the after-school, communicating with your students, because your students are, you've got to go communicate some other way with your athletes or with your extracurricular clubs or anything of that nature.
They could still communicate with the parents during the school day.
The staff member.
Students, they can make...
Right. I mean, they could have parents on and out.
They would have separate contacts, so they can push it out to parents.
If something came up.
Then, couldn't they just email them? I mean, the kids all have their Chromebooks with them, and so, you can send messages that way, just email your athletes with their Chromebook.
Well, you could, but how often, I mean...
Maybe kids start checking out emails.
Some parents don't check their emails. I mean, you know, and I'll say, I'll just be honest with you, my personal email, I don't check it a lot, but, but, I mean, it's, it's just because, and just don't, but, some people don't, don't want that mode of communication through email. They would rather have a text, or they would rather use that app, because that's, that's a different way to communicate, and that's the way they prefer, so...
I think you're talking about the students, students are using the Chromebooks. If a teacher or a coach needs to communicate with his students, they just email.
Coaches could, they could, yeah. And we're just doing announcements over the intercom, too.
I grew up with a type.
Yeah.
That's what I grew up, yeah, else, and they just send it over the intercom.
So, we will push out the VDOE survey to all parents, so, Bud and Sarah's here, because she helps us with that in Power School. So, we'll find that VDOE, and we can send a caller out to parents with that meeting. Can we do that, Paul? And then, you guys can look at this and evaluate. We'll place till the final, but this is kind of where we are. We're still following the original one that we had. This is not in place, you know, we're not making any changes. It's still what was, what we had, what's in our code of conduct.
That's on stage, I mean, we'll bring it up the next work, next work session, because we should have the final.
It'll be, should be a couple of days, Dr. Sumit.
Yep.
Amen.
All right. Next, we have the Russi Jeffries Cafeteria. Dr. Costner.
Yes, in front of you have Russi Jeffries Elementary Kitchen, had outdated serving line equipment. And in addition, the current equipment is too tall for many of our students serving this kitchen. The equipment is in need of replacement. New equipment will allow for better service to the students, but faster and more efficient flow through the line. There will be clearer visibility and display of the food items, and which students will be able to see their options, and the items can't be displayed in a way that is safer for service. The new cashier station will allow for the cashier to be behind the serving line, making them more available for assistance with food prep and kitchen duties. Projected costs will cover the removal and disposal of the old equipment and includes delivery and install of the new equipment. And you can see the cost for financing it, and there's also the quotes that are attached that they went through there. This is bringing for you for discussion, and will be brought back to the September 4th meeting for approval. So, are there any questions that you would like me to carry back to get answered?
What do we do with the old equipment? I'm just curious, the old cafeteria equipment?
This, I'll have to check specifically and check with Ms. Kimsey, who is over cafeteria. She would have been here today, but due to an illness, was on the table. But, I'll find that answer and get, bring it to you for the next meeting.
If it's usable, it should be surplus, just like any other school item that we add. If it's over a certain dollar amount, or, or maybe if it decently moved to another school, then when they move something to another school. But, any items that the school owns that are in good, usable, worthy condition, they should be surplus.
I would not recommend putting it all in storage. I would not recommend.
Exactly why I was asking. You're right.
It's usually traded in on new equipment to the vendor.
Okay, okay.
As past a useful life.
Okay.
So, they will take it back and they revert shit they could sell on the later day.
Okay, okay. I wasn't sure if we had to keep those spuns separate, since this is all the cafeteria spuns, so...
Yeah, this will come out of child nutrition.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, here, I see what you're saying, if we.
Or to surplus it, yeah, and then, okay.
Any questions on this this evening? Thank you. All right, next up is the first reading and discussion of JFG dash R2, use of metal detectors, Dr. Costner.
Yes, at this time, you see the proposed regulation for the first reading of the use of metal detectors, are there any discussions, this is a new regulation coming forward for use of metal detectors in our own division?
I have a couple, I don't know if they're fundamental questions or problems with this whole thing, which is, we're sort of backing into, we, we approved, under the building committee, we approved to give a metal detector for this building.
Right, yes, sir.
And we said, just, let's just get the one for this building, and the reason we got one for this building is there are problems at this building, that said, well, if we had a metal detector, we might fix the problems, so. All of a sudden, we have five metal detectors, that we only seemingly gave approval to buy one, and now we have four others sitting in storage, now we're, we're sort of creating a, well, now that we have them, let's use them place, and I, I don't know, you know, I don't know if there's been enough evidence to show that we need to put them elsewhere, based on the reports we get from the SRO and other things, and secondarily, even reading some of this stuff, it seems like, when I get down to the Warren County courthouse, there's two officers working this station where, you know, people are coming in very slowly, not very often, and you're talking about putting them in a school where there's hundreds of kids coming in at the same time, it seems like there has to be professional people there to monitor these things, have to bring in book backpacks in, it just seems like it's a lot of trauma for maybe not enough evidence that we need them, so I'm going to be the first person to say, I don't know if we need them in any place else, other than this building, willing to be, have my mind changed on it, but that's my opinion of it, so if we have a metal detector, it seems like it should be for one particular place, whether it has to be a policy on it or not, I'm not sure, this is a much easier place to navigate the people coming and going, there's fewer people that are here, there's, there's people don't have to bring bags with them when they come here, they just walk through, and there it is out there, whereas regular populations coming and going at a, a school, I don't know how it's being managed. Again, if we were downtown Detroit or something, and there's evidence, there's some problem, I get it, but, I don't know, so that's, that's just a, I'm throwing that out there, discussion, work session, whatever, that's my sort of idea on that, I'm not sure where to go with it, or whether we need this, or whether you just need a detector, a policy for this building, or, or what, so that's, that's what I have to say.
I understand your questions, concerns, in the way that this, this was compiled and put together was just to, for a use of, for a use of a metal detector, the decision on where to place metal detectors and everything else, is not part of this, this is, this is just, if, if we have them, then, you know, this is what will take place, what they're looking for, this is also gathered from the input of some of the administrators, shared some information to make sure that, when they look through it also.
Well, this does say in number one, under procedure three, the superintendent, his or her designee, or the principal of the school in a non-delegable duty, shall approve the use of a metal detector at his or her school, school property or specific school activity, so it does actually deal with.
All the schools.
All the schools.
It is written for the division. Yes, it's not written specifically for work, for one stool.
And it's written to remove us from the decision-making as soon as this is passed.
No, ma'am, it was not written that way.
No, it is, because, like you just read in number one, if we pass this policy as it is currently written, it says, the superintendent and the principal will be the only ones who get to, it says they shall approve the use of metal detector, it, it completely removes the school board from, from the entire equation at making that decision.
If I may, the way, now I understand the way you're reading it, okay, the way, when it was written, was written that if there's a metal detector there, then the superintendent, or as you said, the administration, president of the authority, make reasonable, necessary, proper management to provide, whatever, if they're to have it or not, that it's written, it was written that way if the metal detectors were in the building, not written as that, I'm going to pick one up, carry it and set it down, now, if, if you would like for us to, again, this is all up for discussion, if you would like for us to go back and revisit it, to look at, you know, coming up with some different terminology and different verbiage, I will be glad to do whatever the board wishes, but it was, it was not written as if this is what was going to happen, it was written as if it was already there, so, I apologize if it's coming across that way, but it was not written in, in that nature.
It's, we just kind of started off on, on the wrong, but with all of it, because we're talking about the metal detectors already there, like, we had, and Mr. Refanet said, we agreed that there was going to be one metal detector purchased for this one school because of issues that had occurred. Our board never approved, never voted on the expenditure funds to purchase all of these extra for metal detectors, it was an expenditure that was over the allowable expenditure to purchase without our board's approval, and now, the way that it's written, those metal detectors essentially are already there, even though they're in storage, they've, the two, my understanding was, two were intended for each of the two high schools, so it does feel like we have been, as a board, removed from this decision-making authority altogether.
Well, the will of the board is, I will be glad to do so, if being necessary, if we want to table this altogether, if you used to have a further discussion on how the verbiage is to be written, if you would like me to continue to look, to write it in a different format, I'll be glad to do so, whatever the board wishes to do.
Did you base this mostly on, on other divisions that?
Yes, ma'am, I, I utilized, and looked at other schools that, in other divisions in, in Virginia, that had metal detectors already installed, and I looked to see what their policy was for how they handled metal detectors, and so that's why it is written that way.
When you were looking, did you mind that there are a lot of school divisions with policies like that, I mean, I honestly just don't know.
The, the number, the number of policies, it was like, I, I came across through board docs, is, is actually how I researched it, and, and then also researched some articles that was more in the Virginia Beach area, then, but then also in looking at, I mean, just in the news this morning, there was articles, and I watched, I mean, this is educator, I mean, when you watch, and you can see things about education, and seeing students going through metal detectors, and the types of metal detectors they were using, so there are other divisions out there that do have it, I mean, I can, I could probably try to research more, to give you a better accurate count, I don't know.
So Winchester City is, has contracted with, with a organization, and also out in Prince William County, they have contracted, but it's, it's not a purchase situation, it's pilot programs, and it's a contractual, the Nassau City, I know, where, has them as well, but they're, kind of comes as a package deal, is my understanding, like they, it's on a lease, and there are many of them, and they also provide the.
Professionals.
The professionals who are doing the monitoring, but they're also on much, much larger budgets than what, what they are, so. So going in, I just, there is Ashley, the model that is designed specifically for weapons, so, and the same with Prince William and the others, it's a weapons detection system, so it is a larger scale operation, like you said, that is a pilot program that a lot of those jurisdictions are using. Well, and then on the same list of, of items here, in number two, section two, it specifically talks about, like, only school personnel trained, but it mentions then, or Warren County sheriff's deputies, which, how, how do Warren County sheriff's deputies feel about, about banning metal detectors? So, we will not be banning the metal detectors, and the only way that we would be involved in the search of a metal detector is if there was exigent or imminent threats involved, so that would have to be a security risk at that point, just because a metal detector goes off, we would not get involved, we would, there would have to be probable calls that there is a weapon of some sort before we would even get involved with the metal detectors.
Is the smell detect, the smell detector is not being used right now, we just, is a policy in place?
Right. So could we, could we, these are switching, switching gears with this, instead of writing a division-wide policy for metal detector used at all the schools, can we switch gears and just specifically get the regulation in place so that we can begin using the metal detector at diversified minds, at our alternative education facility? We follow a lot of, of this, but it, this is a smaller school, they, my understanding is, don't bring in book bags, they come, and all their items are already here, and it's a completely different scenario altogether.
So, Madam Chair, I'm going to recommend that we, we do this school division-wide, I have been looking at metal detectors for over two years, and researching, and looking at when and how we can do that, because when it comes down to school safety, who is the board going to hold accountable at any school when it comes to safety? It's, it's the superintendent, and so we have been looking at this over the last two years, and I can tell you since, it goes back to when Mr. Liveisay was here, we were looking at some things and getting some quotes, and so, this is, is, when you look at safety at a school, you look at layers, and, you know, there is no way with, right now, that we were going to run every child through a metal detector at our schools, that's not, that's not the intent of that. The intent of the metal detectors was to add another layer of security at the main entrance, that way it is there at the main entrance at those, at those schools, so when they do come in, if, if you have visitors or something of that nature, that they would have to then, you know, go through that, that metal detector, this would also allow us to practice with our, do our, you know, a, a trial for the year, because the ultimate goal would be that you have four or five metal detectors at each entrance, whether that be a bus entrance, or whether that be a drop-off entrance, and that every student is going through that, now that takes a lot of planning, when you go into that, and you look at clear backpacks, you look at doing away with the metal spiral notebooks, and get the plastic spiral notebooks, things of that nature, that, that will help, I know that, you know, we do have a good resource with us right now when it comes to the metal detectors, I can tell you that Dr. Costner and where he has been in, in South Carolina, that they, he has extensive experience with metal detectors in schools and at all of their events, so, that comes to where, you know, this is something that we need to enhance safety and security, this is just another layer, it's at the main entrance of the doors, or at the secondary schools, so it's not running every child through there, it's not checking every child, there is training that can be done, we did look at passive devices, we got a quote on a passive device, probably similar to what they're using in either Prince Williams or Vanessa City, and when we got our quote on that, that was a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars for, for a few devices, and that was just not manageable. With this, there, there is a way to, to make it to where it does help to just make our schools a little bit more safer coming through that main entrance, and that's really what the purpose of this is, so.
So is the, is the plan to target only the visitors, solely metal detect, like you said, the visitors, so is that, so we're metal detecting the parents again, not?
So right now, it would be at the main entrances, and then we expand, as we expand, where we are putting our metal detectors, so you have to start somewhere, and we're, we would like to start at the, you know, my plan was to start at the main entrances of those, of those secondary schools.
You know, you mentioned sporting events, and at the secondary levels, of course, we have a lot of after-hours sporting events, but if we're doing them at the main entrance, is that how community members would then enter games, because that's not how they do it now?
No, so, so, they're portable, so, so the goal would be eventually to have where we could get our, you know, enough at our entrances, where we have kids coming by, we're screening, but then you can also take those down to the football games, you can take those down to the basketball game, you can take, take any event you want to take them because they are portable, and so they are able to be used in various locations throughout the school, can add to moments.
So I guess, I think my biggest issue here is on the process, I, I take a huge issue with the process, because you've now said that you've been looking into this for two years, but our board has been completely circumvented in this, if we've been talking about that, you may have been looking at them for two years, but we have not been included in that conversation, and it feels like the moment that there was an opening because of the weapons incident here at this school, and our board was okay with, with doing metal detectors here at this school, that then it was taken upon yourself to purchase these metal detectors, which, which goes directly against our financial policy of expenditure without foreapproval, and so now we purchase them, but then, when I'm reading what's actually written here, it specifically says that, that there shall, shall use only the entries designated, we have what, eight hundred plus students at each high school, so we're going to have eight hundred students going through two metal detectors that are not weapons detectors, that are going to be going off on cell phones and computers and binders and spiral notebooks and all these things, this is going to put in a critical strain on.
Not having students go through the metal detectors unless they come through the main entrance.
Shall use only the entries designated. When a metal detector is being used, all designated students, staff members and others who wish to enter the school or school-related activity shall use only the entries designated, so if you're, you, it says you can't pick and choose who you're, that would be discriminatory to, to run some kids through it, some kids not through it, but, and again, number one, completely, again, circumvents this board, I've already spoken about that, reiterated it, so, I, as a mother, would have a serious issue if my child was being pulled aside into a room and patted down and searched, just trying to go to, to school every day.
So I'd like to clarify the purchasing of these, because I feel like there's some pretty, you know, accusatory language that's being used, and I'm not sure that that's the case, could we clarify how these were purchased, and we did not approve them as the board, can we discuss that?
So each purchase was, was going to be for each school, then I did get it filed to request that they could put, like, the Warren County on one purchase order and the Skyline High School on another purchase order, I told them that was fine, but, we were, you know, when you look at purchases.
Because if you make one purchase.
That's a contract.
For one contract, we as a board have to approve it if it's over twenty-five thousand dollars, but if, you know, different schools make different purchases, and long as it's under, it doesn't have to be.
Yeah, well, if you have multiple purchase orders for, for various things throughout the division, even if it's one vendor, you go to the copiers, you know, we, you guys used to have to approve every single copier that was coming up because it was over fifteen thousand, well, that's one vendor, it's not fine, you would have multiple copiers come before the board, well, now that it's, you know, that's a twenty, but I signed those because it's under that, so it is one vendor, and I will sign those contracts, and we, we move forward.
We, how much was one?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand, so.
We were forty-one thousand dollars in, and it was pulled out of the facility budget, they were, it was pulled out of the facilities budget, the facilities budget, they were ordered all on the same day, and yes, they were intentionally split up into different quarters so that it would stay underneath the thing, it sounds very reminiscent of the way that a certain county administrator used to get away with doing those same things back in the day of the EDA issues. It is not a purchase method that I feel comfortable with at all.
Well, I think the question was going to be, where are we going forward with this?
Yes, Madam Chair, how would you like me to proceed with the JFG dash R2?
I personally like the concept of having some sort of regulation currently put in place for, for this building, since it's here, and everyone seems to agree it's necessary for this building, not everyone seems to agree that we should go forth with everything, but that's more of the discussion, but it seems like we have the thing sitting out there for now, a regulation is something that can be done immediately without forereadings, and it seems like we should have something set up for that to happen, that would be my recommendation.
I think it would be helpful to hear maybe a little bit more about the thoughts of how they'll be used and why, and who requested them. I think it would be helpful to hear, um, maybe a little bit more about the thoughts of how they'll be used and why, and who requested them, and what the benefits, and maybe come back so far. So I wonder if we could, maybe at the September work session, or whenever is appropriate, hear a little bit more about metal detectors in general, and, and how we want to use them.
I'll be glad to, and even, uh, if the board's up, we was walking around, we can go through it, demonstrate it. Um, we can probably, I'll get with them to help make sure it is activated at that time, and we can, um, we'll be glad to, um, talk about it and kind of explain, and kind of also, that may bring up other questions that you have of thinking that, hey, we may need this and that. Um, that may, and give you changes of looking at that, so, um. It's, it, again, it's, it's whatever the board wishes for me to do with this policy, I'll be glad, regulations, excuse me, I'll be glad to do so.
So if safety is truly the concern, and this school right here has a clear safety concern after the issues that took place last year, we need to move forward with a regulation for this school right now, as a something we can all agree, I don't mean like right this moment, but let's get that drafted, written for this school. And then after that, we can tape our time, and we can discuss what were, how these were purchased, what we're putting elsewhere, how they work, all that good stuff. But this one, I mean, it's literally, if it's there, it's there. We've spent ten thousand dollars constructing the safety vestibule wall. We've had consistent issues with weapons in this facility, the metal detector is already set up and in place.
So I would agree with this.
I mean, that would be.
Yeah, so I do want to make a comment, as far as the incident that happened here, there were three knives that were found. But you don't have consistent discipline issues at this school as you do at other schools. So I do want to clarify, um, that.
I was going to say, since we have this one here, we put that vestibule in, could we even just write it up as this is kind of our training temporary pilots, metal detector area, it doesn't have to be the primary, just so it can be used, so it can see how it works.
I'm glad, and that is, you know, just as my, as the board know, and I know the safety, um, the primary concern of, you know, a safe nurturing environment, where we can prob, provide the instruction that our students need to be successful. And just do, do keep that in mind, because I'd rather, I would rather be on the proactive side than the reactive side. Uh, and I've been on both, and, um, being on one is, is good, being on the other one i- is, is not so good. And I, we never have to experience being on the reactive side, so, um, but I do appreciate your, um, consideration, I say that. But fair, I will, this will be, I'll work on writing something specifically for this, is that the worst direct?
Is that anyone, I wish that was not, to you, this one, with the plan that will, though, with everything else to expand, that you're describing.
I like, yeah, yeah, of a pilot, um, that could be, you know, used at, this is the pilot, look at it, what works, but could be expanded to all schools, you know, but.
I hear what you're saying, or for Valder, and I realize that the, all of the schools are going to be a safety concern. So I think that the discussion and the pilot program, we have to be careful with how we say that, because we're not trying to just isolate this one school, but this is the school that then you put the new vestibule in, we have it set up to do that, and it is much lower in numbers and easier to manage.
And, and at the secondary schools, you have the secure vestibule, secure vestibule set up, um, you know, and you have those entrances, that main entrance, where, you know, once school starts, that is the key, that is the, the point where, where everything comes through that, that door. Um, so, so you have that there as well.
You would like this to come to the next work session, or the next board meeting?
I think, I think this school needs to happen at this next board meeting, but as soon as possible, the metal detector in this school needs to be up and functional.
Yeah, I would agree, the next meeting, if we create, I think we could talk about it or put on it the next regular meeting.
Most, bye. Thank you, Dr. Costner.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, then I get an action to convene the closed session, please.
This motion is made at this open public meeting of the Warren County School Board, if we would close the meeting, pursue it to Virginia, both section two point two dash three seven word one. The school board desires to discuss the following matters in a closed meeting. Section two point two dash three seven one one A one, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of employees of the school board, specifically the personnel report, personnel report addendum, employee number zero eight zero seven two four dash one, and the superintendent's evaluation. Is there a second?
May I second it?
Mr. Valder, junior vocal.
Mrs. Lowe.
Aye.
Dr. Funk.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye.
Mr. McFadden.
Aye.
Mrs. Salins.
Aye.